Calls me in order and have our opening prayer by Trustee Ron Day.
That is right. Father, I thank you for this day and for the many blessings of life that you give to us. Father, we never take those for granted. Father, as we go about the college's business this evening, would you give us wisdom for those, the decisions that we made? Father, for the people that we represent, we thank you for this student body. But Father, we thank for those who lead this, this college. Continue to bless them. And you're saying, "In the Son's name we ask." Amen.
Thank you. Do you hear of any comments on the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to President's Court. Dr. Morrison?
All right. All right. We've had a busy month in October. A lot of activities and from athletics and student activities. So we'll just kind of jump right in here. I am not working.
Okay.
All right. I wanted to give a shout out to Suzie Smith. She had a presentation at the Daughters of McRevolution in Cedar, Cedar Creek Chapter. She did a wonderful job representing TBCC talking about the Constitution. And I'm sorry, I took a horrible picture at the time. She had her eyes closed there. She's, she's going to see this and I'm going to get, I'm going to get in trouble for that. All right, next slide. I want to get a spot, a kind of spotlight to our faculty members. Robert Britton, Computer Science Instructor, for obtaining his graduate certificate completion in sociology from Grand Canyon University. And Richard Crosby had a paper published this past summer titled "Barriers to Post-Secondary Career and Technical Education in Correctional Education: Removing Education Assessment as Interest Criteria." So good shout out to those two. And want to spotlight one of our students here, David Orno, Orno. He just received a full scholarship to Johns Hopkins University. So applause to David for his accomplishments. Palestine, they've been, a lot of activity going on campus. The Palestinian nursing students had a free lunch the other day to work on some of their training. I'll give thanks to my wife for helping private free lunch because she left money in my wallet to give to those students. But Karen Shipman sent this picture and because the students were very appreciative and they've been working hard in the vocational nursing program. Family Day was a huge success on the campus of Trinity Valley. Here's a picture of one of our softball girls with her parents. We had a lot of activities, fun events going on all day. Our campus was packed with parents just, you know, touring the campus, purchased a lot of things out of the bookstore. I know that keeps David happy and they do that, so. The Texas State Parade on opening day, our band and our nationally known cardettes participated. It was hot, but they did a great job representing Trinity Valley. We had the grand opening of the Kaufman Resource Center. It's a partnership between TBCC in providing leased space for some nonprofit groups to do what they do and help the community and serve the community. And we had a huge turnout for that grand opening and a lot of the area nonprofits, some based out of Dallas, are now operating a location in Kaufman. You always like it when you get big checks. We saw the Jet Grant Presentation. I think of the $1.3 million given, I think TBCC is partnered with about $1.1 million. Isn't that right, Kelly?
Yes.
With our area ISDs for, you know, workforce education programs. We also had the Texas Trust Scholarship Dedication. They came to campus and they're providing $1,000 scholarships over the, for both, two programs, one in welding and one in liberal arts over the next five years. So there'll be a lucky student that gets benefit from that scholarship. Friends of the Cardinals in full kickoff, you know, we've been having events highlighting the family, host families and the students. And it's fun to hear about the students getting involved, showing up at Pee Wee football games for their host family, plays, events. It's, it's fun to see these kids, our TVC kids, showing up at the kids of, I guess they're younger siblings and supporting them as the younger siblings support them on their, in their competition. Just give you a rundown, we have 70 host families that are helping support 150 athletes. So if you want to be a host family next year, we can get you signed up. I would love to, I have nine children. Two football, two men's basketball, one women's basketball, one softball, two cheerleaders. Was that nine? I think that was all of them. I think I'm missing someone, but don't tell them I missed them. Dr. Rossley, I just wanted to provide proof. I don't think you believed me last week. When you, when I was opening the cattle gate, I wanted you to see proof.
We're in usual boots.
We'll work on the uniform. Appreciate that.
Our amateur radio class, I don't know, many of you might realize, we've been doing an amateur radio class on Monday nights part of a continuing education program. We had about 20 people that are participating in that program. This is one night when the weather vehicle came out and they were talking about this, what they do in the kind of the professional sector and everything. And then I learned that we leased space on our tower for amateur radio. So it's kind of, it was kind of a cool, neat little class if anybody's interested in amateur radio. So good shout out to David D's in putting that on for us. All right, it started, well, basketball season will be here Wednesday. The men will tip off Wednesday afternoon. But just got to give a shout out to our Lady Cardinals. They are the 2023 National Runner-Ups. They start their season, I think now November 7th, their November 3rd game got changed, so they're starting at home on November 7th. The Cardinal, the men Cardinal will tip off Wednesday night at four o'clock up in Terrell at Southwest Christian. The Lady Cardinals were picked first in our conference and the men Cardinal were picked second in the East Zone. But to kind of give a shout out, these have changed slightly. But last week, we had four of our teams ranked in the top 10. Our women's basketball in the preseason poll are ranked number two. Our volleyball are ranked seventh. Football has now moved up to seventh. And our men's basketball, I guess the preseason jamborees have gotten some attention. They start off in the polls at number nine in the country. So somebody's seen what they can do already to kind of start off that high ranking, you know. But we'll see what they do. Kind of a little update, I had the opportunity a few weeks ago to be a co-host on Ed Up. It's a nationally syndicated educational podcast that just talks about educational issues. I got to participate with Amy Diaz, who's the president at Gateway Community College in Texas, just talking about, you know, just workforce, new programs. Amy's new to the presidency's position, kind of the, you know, being new to that type of position. So very thankful for Ed Up letting me be a guest on their show once again. Community service. Our student athletes do a wonderful job. They came out in one day, helped the First Methodist Church pack over 60,000 meals that would now be distributed. So shout out to all of our student athletes that participated in that. You see some of our Lady Cardinals there, one of our softball team and members of our Lady Volleyball Team that all came out in two shifts, a morning shift and afternoon shift, just to work hard to help serve our community. We have some wonderful students that maybe Philip by the end of the year will give me a calculation of how many community service hours that our student athletes put in. That'll be interesting to see.
It will be higher than anybody probably will think. A lot.
So, so a shout out to our students. We had the Student Resource Fair. This is open for students to learn about area, local resources that are available to them as students. And you see our members of our Student Government Association. Androcles and the Lion. We had our first theater production. It was done for area schools, elementary schools. We had a packed house every performance and those theater students did a great job in this production. Their next production would come in up in, I think, at the end of the, in, in November. So if you hadn't had a chance to come out and see one of our plays, you need to come out and support the theater students. They do a great job of representing our institution. You know, I've been highlighting our regional accomplishments. We've been very fortunate. We've had national recognition far as our athletes. We had Player of the Week in football. And the next one, we had a Player of the Week for volleyball. And these are national. And then we followed up with another national recognition in football, our place kicker, Ty Powers. So great kudos to those student athletes. Not only, I mean, it's one thing to receive your regional recognition, but this is national recognition, so. Student, the Field House, the football Field House has some new imagery, recognition of all of the student athletes that attended TBCC that went on to play in the NFL. So if you get a chance, go over to the Field House and check out that kind of display and see the names that are on the wall, like John Randall, who's in the Hall of Fame from the Minnesota Vikings. Just another, I'm going to always do a shout out to a dual credit school partner. And this week, we're giving a shout out to Malakoff High School. We, this fall, we have 39 students in dual credit classes. They're a strong value partner and we only look to see these numbers increase in the future. All right. The National Alliance of Concurrent Enrollment Partnerships. We were recognized as a spotlight school, so Mary Helen is doing a great job in dual credit and getting national recognition. Our Hall of Fame Breakfast will be this Saturday and here are the newest class of the Hall of Fame. So if you get a chance, come out eight o'clock at the Athens Country Club and you can participate in the Hall of Fame Breakfast. Give a shout out to our Lady Cardinal Soccer Team as they made history as they qualified for their first ever regional playoffs. So congratulations to those ladies. Unfortunately, they failed to blend in that opening round. Esports. I wish I knew more about it, but some hero is ranked 75th out of 175. Luke is 27, 165 in Smash Brothers. Call of Duty, we're ranked eighth in the country. Overwatch, we're ranked number one. Rocket League, we're seventh in the East Region. Smash Crew Battle, we're ranked 10th. And Rainbow Siege is ranked number one in the nation. Please do not ask any questions. We'll have to get the coach in here to explain all of that, but they're doing some great things. Like I said, you need to go watch a match if you ever get a chance. It's really fun. We, we have an anime club and they hosted a bake sale to raise money for their club, so shout out to the anime club. This, tomorrow, I hope to see everybody in their Halloween costumes. Trustee Henry, I hope seeing your Halloween costume tomorrow night. As we will be hosting a, a trunk or treat from 5:30 to 7:30. This is another great community outreach just to get the TBCC name out there. That's done by our softball and volleyball teams. The tree lighting ceremony will be on November 15th, yeah, November 15th. So put that out on your calendar. So you want to be on campus for the tree lighting. And I wanted to give some of our Palestinian students some love. Here's some of the students just enjoying the afternoon on the campus doing some extra studying. And that's it. I'll have some more updates on rodeo and things at the next board meeting because we've had a very successful weekend in rodeo. But I'll do that next board meeting. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Morrison.
Oh, I have Emily. She's got a presentation. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I have my notes here. Emily, she's going to give us a foundation presentation.
I'm glad they're hiding back there. Good evening and thank you for letting me present to you tonight. Now, I was here just a few months ago and tried to give you at that time a broad overview of what the TBCC Foundation has been working on and some of our activities for the fall semester. Tonight, though, I wanted to provide you a little bit more detailed information about the actual financial benefit that the foundation provides to TBCC. As you know from my previous reports that I've handed out to you in the past, our office employs four staff members, college employees, four staff members. Mattel, Executive Director. We also have a Scholarship Development Coordinator who also serves as our friend of the Cardinals Coordinator. We have an alumni development coordinator who spearheads our alumni relations efforts. We have an executive assistant who is mainly responsible for gift processing, donor relations and record keeping. These four positions, as well as our corresponding budgets that go with our office collectively, cost the college just over $325,000 in total budget dollars. Because of this investment, the foundation is able to award hundreds of thousands of dollars in scholarships each year. As an example, those scholarships include between $375,000 and $400,000 in dual credit scholarships that we've been able to give as a result of a generous grant from the Ginger Ruxton Foundation and giving that for about four years now. This year, we have already awarded 37 workforce scholarships worth $70,893 for TBCC's electrical line worker, plumbing and electrician programs, also courtesy of a grant from the Ray Mark Foundation in Dallas. These scholarships will be carried over to the spring semester, so the total award for this year will be $141,786 for workforce. We've also awarded so far 71 nursing scholarships worth $117,000 and another 132 general scholarships for the total of $251,000. We also have upcoming, the deadline is this week, for the spring 2024 scholarship applications. And we expect to award another $25,000 to $30,000 approximately in spring semester scholarships. Together, these awards total just over $900,000 in scholarship funding alone. Our office is also focused, as you know, on securing philanthropic dollars for programs and capital projects. In the past, the foundation has secured donations for renovation of the Cardinal Gym bleachers, the Cardinal Fitness Center, as well as the construction of the Ed L. May and Frank Johns clock tower. And next year, the TBCC Foundation celebrates 50 years of support for Trinity Valley Community College. And we've already been working on a plan or to plan a year-long celebration in fundraising committee and hope to raise another $500,000 to support our students. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and give you some of these details tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the foundation and our work.
Thank you. This time, you all were sent the copy of the minutes of the September 25th meeting. Hear any comments, discussion or motion to approve? Trustee Stone moved, seconded by 50 Mont. All in favor? Motion carries. Consider and discuss tax abatement update. Dr. Morrison?
David, we'll do financials where we can.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you do it?
No, I'm sorry. I got, I got ahead of myself. Let's do the finances.
All right. Board, we've finally got the books closed. Steph and the rest of my directors did a good job. The auditors are on site a little earlier than the prior years. We finished the year tuition fees about $137,000 ahead of last year. Pretty much dead even, but on housing, food service, bookstore, all those items finished ahead of budget and ahead of the prior year. After the warm taxes, 2.19 million more than last year. And I'll talk about investments in a minute, but the investment income, as expected, with the, being able to do higher rate CDs, $746,000 versus only $117,000 last year. The only other thing I was going to point out, all y'all have these. We finished the year $5.6 million revenue over expense. You know, I'll point out, as y'all know, during the year, we transferred the capital reserve funding, that $2,097. And as usual, I will wait till after the audit, but we expect to be able to transfer another $3.5 million into cap reserve in January. The reason I waited, as I've heard y'all before, is you always have the potential to have hard adjustments anytime you have an audit. We're not expecting anything material, but I just think it's prudent to wait till then. But overall, you know, I think it was a pretty good year recovering from the things that we've recovered from for the last two or three. Norman, we could skip down to the investment report, the monthly investment report. They've got to change. As most of the last of the, even the two and three percent CDs roll off, you know, we're starting even to get into the four and five percent. And as y'all recall, we, we right now are, most of those are with Simmons Bank or Texas Bank and Trust in a money market that gives us a little more liquidity. On the next page. Capital reserve expenses. I know you're going to hear from authorities bunch tonight. We, the yellow panel was the $250,000 to print for engineering. And we still have, as long as 31st, 30 million in cap reserve, so we're looking at 33, 34, even just off of what's left, plus what we're putting in this next year. Last page is payments over $25,000. I'm just going to give, see if the board have any questions to my distinguished colleagues. If not, Mr. Graham, that's honest.
Thank you very much.
And the auditors, I did want to mention as usual, the auditors will probably interview some of the board. Y'all are used to that. Kevin Cashin. But we were able to get started a little early. They're not, no longer doing Tyler Junior College, so I guess we're number one now.
Thank you. Do I hear any discussion on the report or a motion to approve the financial?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve. Trustee Day seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we'll talk about the tax abatement policy update.
Yes, sir. Since we have some guests in the house now that are going to talk about a tax abatement, anytime you do that, you have to be within a two-year window of having reviewed the policy. I'm not recommending any changes. It was just required that to make sure it was on the agenda for the board to review and reapprove. Again, we have to do this every two years anytime we're going to do a possibly. We just recommend through more existing policy.
What, what requires?
I think there's, within the law, I think you have to have a policy that's been updated within two years. If you enter, does it have? Yes, sir, but we didn't do any abatments. So, I mean, we could bring it up every two years, but if you're not doing a tax abatement, that's correct.
David, didn't we do for another solar project over near Scurry? Didn't we do a tax abatement on the, on the solar project over there? Has that been three years ago?
I don't think so.
I mean, it's going to be.
When I looked at the last time we had done this, we were outside of the two-year window. But yes, it was another solar project, correct?
But it was within the two-year window.
Yes.
Yes.
And we, I think we had reapproved it.
It was Lily Solar.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the tax abatement guidelines as presented by Mr. Hopkins? Motion made by Dr. Eason?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor. Motion carry. All right. Consider and discuss bids and approval for TJ Palestine facility.
All right. Over the last month, we have been opening bids. We still have one outstanding bid that was asked for more time and that's on the finishings. But we do have the bid, the first four contracts that have been submitted that deal with the dirtwork, concrete, utilities and so forth. We're praying this to the board for approval to move forward with those four. And so we can start construction as we're starting to enter the not construction season. So we can kind of get a head start and we're expecting the final bid to be open in two weeks now, Corey?
Yes, sir, November 14th.
November 14th. And that's like I said, it's on the, the finishings. We, Corey, you want to add anything about the bids? I know there was a lot of issues about companies getting bid and bid bonds and, and things. Want to kind of address that with the board?
So since you're a Republican, we have that bid bond and bonded and all that. Kind of one of our goals in the very beginning when we started this project is to try to get local contractors as much as we could. And so we have achieved that and I'm happy that now. Some of the contractors, we sent out a lot of different, multiple ones. And I think some of them found it overwhelming when they started reading a bid package. There's obviously a $6 million bid package. And so some of them backed out and then submitted bids. I think that was some of it as well. But overall, so far, we're $188,000 under what we had projected for those four contracts together.
Corey, could, could you discuss the, the bids? Normally we see the bids and hear one saying that, well, this one is, is under. I guess I'm curious, either the bid range, et cetera, and why we're only just seeing the summary of, of the one?
We only had one bids for.
Normally, we would see the bids, here's.
Yeah, we only had, we only had one bid.
Is that the answer?
We actually rebid it to give people more time as well.
Is that the reason for the delay and why we delayed this meeting?
Yes, sir.
Trying to get others to rush?
I didn't want them to crunch their numbers and just throw us a number. I want them to have time and be comfortable. And so the response we got back was, yes, if you'll give me two more weeks, I can get this number where it's not, you know, just a number in outer space to where they're comfortable. And it did work. We achieved that.
Now, did we just have one bid on one of these projects? One for each or?
Yes, sir.
Or one for each one?
One for each one.
Yep.
By a different contract.
Why do you think that's intense?
It's a good question. I think they were just overwhelmed by the size of the price.
By the size? Do you think it's proven that when you have a whole group of one slide pump that you optimize pricing for the college? I'm asking opinions. I'm not being critical of anything here.
No.
But understanding, number one, there was no qualifier regarding to not seeing the other bids. So I'm just searching for information and getting your opinion for being exposed to it.
Right. It's always good to get multiple bids. I totally agree with you.
I agree.
It also tells you if they sharpen their pencil or not. But then also I look at where we budgeted and then I look at the quality of contractor as well. And so I feel like we're within budget and we're also have local contractors plus the contractors we've all worked with before and they produce good work too. So I feel like that is a good, a good price and a good, contractors are ready to go to work. If it's approved, the third contractor is going to start on number six.
How do you feel about the cost?
I feel good about the cost because we're under budget.
All of these vendors are bonded for completion?
Yes, sir. They produce the bid bond with their bid. And then also they will produce a performance and a payment bond that performs worse. And actually, contract one has already been. And actually, contract one has already been working on this in preparation to start on number six.
Now, you're saying we're a hundred eighty eight thousand, uh, under budget so far.
Yes, sir.
But we're actually awarding a piece of total project here in, in reality.
Yes, sir.
Any concern or reason you might have to say, well, we might really get a big shock on the, on the finish out, because, you know, it's not an option at that point. And you're, you're going to go with it.
When I had a discussion with the bidders that are working on the finish out bid, and I told them what my budget was. They said, yes, we feel comfortable, we can get under that budget.
Are there more than one for that, for the finish out bid?
So, Mr. Scheffler, from one of the things, we're trying to get him back to the table as well, he's a little nervous about the art of taste bid package. Uh, we're going to go back and talk to him again, he worked, he actually came recommended by us. And then the other finish out is John Johnson, the worship group, anybody know John Johnson? He builds McDonald's and Chick-fil-A's. He's, he's a lovely guy, too. And that's the two we're trying to get to.
Anybody else have any other questions before? Uh, just to rebound the board, um, when is our, uh, projected kickoff date for the building to be in operation?
January twenty twenty five.
Correct.
So our windows, we're placing that window and getting the fall season right now.
Correct. So I do have some dates I can share with y'all, so, um, obviously we're starting to start at work now. And once it's approved, we kind of still give enough award, and we're looking at four months, sixteen weeks to get building onsite. And then another two months to get it erected. So we will start the finish out probably in the spring, probably some, yeah, so that will give us all summer and unfortunately fall for the finish out part.
And you think that's very doable?
Yes, sir. The finish out is really not anything complicated, it's two open rooms, a couple offices and.
And what's the square footage on the project?
Twenty thousand square foot.
All right, anybody else have any other questions? Uh, do we need to rec, I guess we need to approve each individual contract as it is, or can we do it as a, as a bulk group?
I think we say contracts one, two, three, and four, just separate it, contracts.
Do we hear a motion to approve? Contracts one, two, three, and four.
I'll make that motion.
Just to hear who made the motion?
I'm sorry.
Seconded by, uh, Dr. Rasson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What, uh, like sign for no? It passes, thank you. Thank you, Corey. Store of Business. Is the Wisconsin Bestra Tax Abatement.
Yes, we have some guests today.
The board, this is for discussion, I wouldn't just let the United on the board January. So just provide the area, this is real life.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, my name is Kimberly Haley, I am the Community Affairs Manager for Vistra, and thank you so much for having us. Um, Eric Cornet's also in the back, he will also be presenting as well, um, some details about the Forest Grove, uh, facility, I mean, he is the Director of Project Development for our ERCOT project. Um, tonight, we would just like to kind of tell you about Vistra, make sure that you know who we are, um, and as well as discuss the Forest Grove project, and then obviously answer any questions, um, that they, they may have. Moving on to the next slide, please. So just a quick overview about Vistra, uh, Vistra is the parent company of Luminate, TXU Energy, and some other subsidiaries. We are a Texas-based company, we date back to the eighteen hundreds, we actually go back all the way back to eighteen eighty-two. When one of our predecessor company, uh, the Dallas, um, Electric Wyoming Company provided the Dallas, or sort of the, the likes, um, in Dallas for the very first time. So we've been around Texas for a very long time, our headquarters are just down the road in Irving, Texas, that is where I office, we're just right down the road. And while we've expanded our, um, our operations between different states, we are proud to be a Texas company and to call it home. What we are known as, uh, we are what's known as an integrated retail and energy company, you kind of see it up there on, on that headline. Basically, what that means is that we make power, we generate power through our different power plants and our battery energy source, and we sell power through our different retail brands. We're not the poles and wires, we not, we do not distribute the power, that we make it, and then we sell it. Um, we, uh, uh, we are the largest competitor, we are the largest competitive power generator in Texas and in the U.S. Um, our total capacity is thirty-seven gigawatts, and that's enough to power twenty million homes, so we can definitely power a lot of homes. We operate in twenty different states, you can kind of see our footprint right there, um, all the way to Maine, or all the way in California, um, all the way to Maine. We obviously skip a few states, but that is our main footprint, but like I said, Texas is our home, um, and we, we are definitely very proud to call Texas our home. We believe in a diverse fuel mix, um, kind of an all of the above, so to speak, we currently have sixty to seventy percent of our fleet is natural gas. And we do have some coal plants and one nuclear power plant. Uh, we are pivoting though towards more renewable energy and zero emissions, and that's through our Vistra Zero Initiative, which is what the Forest Grove, um, Solar Facility would be part of. Actually, I guess you can go ahead onto the next slide if you want, and that's just a little bit more information about our company right there. I guess we can go into the next slide, please, thank you. So Vistra is already in Henderson County, uh, we own and operate the Trinidad Power Plant, uh, is a two hundred and forty-four megawatts, a natural gas power plant. Uh, so we're already here, and we also, um, have retail operations, so we have thousands of customers. Uh, through, um, our brands, uh, TXU Energy, Ambit, and then also Pride Eagle as well. And then we also, we already partner with a couple of, uh, nonprofits here, um, in the area, the Greater East Texas Community Action Program and the Henderson County Help Center. And we partner with those two nonprofits to help with the bill payment assistance program, um, that we offer through a TXU program. And that program is, uh, it's a great program, it's been around for about forty years, and so we try to help our customers, uh, that, that might need help to pay their bills. Everybody needs a helping hand every now and then, so we partner with agencies across the state of Texas, and those are the two that we partner with here. You want to move on? Great, thank you. Um, so we really do care about our communities and where we do business, uh, this is just one example of this. Um, in coordination with the Henderson County Historical Commission, a couple of years back, uh, we helped to restore a historic flag cemetery. Um, and we did this on our property, and, uh, it's, it's, we're definitely very proud of the fact that we were able to help restore that. So again, that's just one example of our community involvement that we try to do in our communities. Next slide, great, thank you. Um, so as I mentioned, we currently have a very, uh, important initiative, I call it Vistra Zero, which, uh, the Forest Grove Solar Facility is part of. We are transitioning, um, we believe in all of the above fuel mix, I, like I said, uh, but we are transitioning into renewable energy, we're transitioning into, um, clean energy. And so this is just, um, a kind of a, a list of some of the, the projects that we have, um, here in both Texas, but then also in other states as well. Uh, so we definitely want to include, um, like, so we definitely want to keep Forest Grove on, on the list. Uh, now I'm going to turn it over to Eric to start talking about some details about the Forest Grove Solar.
Hello, board, uh, thank you, Kimberly, for the introduction and walking us through a little bit of Vistra and kind of what we're here to talk about today. So I'll go into some of the project details and talk a little bit more, um, about where it's located, timelines, what we're here to discuss, uh, potentially in January. So this project is about two hundred megawatts, that encompasses around twenty-one hundred acres. If you are aware of where Keeney Lake is, it is situated around that lake between Highway one seventy-five and Keeney. We own about twelve thousand acres in this area, um, so there is potential for future expansions, uh, of this project. And if it comes online in Q four of twenty twenty-five, uh, that would probably be the earliest date, maybe Q one of twenty-six. A lot of it hinges on some of the levers that we are trying to pull on a project like this for some of the same headwinds that we're all experiencing, interest rates and so forth. Um, are making projects like this tough, because they are capital intensive, and we have to decide what is the best use of that capital. So it comes down to a return scheme where we're evaluating which projects get built and how that money gets used. I sit in front of folks just like you on our side and have to, uh, discuss our project's value and why we should build it or use that capital for other projects. So, uh, this project does go into construction, it would take about eighteen months to twenty-four months to fully be built. Uh, takes a long time to, uh, do the racking, put the panels in, clear the land, and get everything ready. During that time, you can expect two to three of your, uh, construction workers onsite at any different point. And then afterwards, these are very efficient projects, you're only looking at one or two full-time employees. Uh, so it's not a lot of impact on the infrastructure needed in the local area, but during the life of the project, there are constantly contractors coming by to do repairs, make upgrades, things like that. Um, that would spur some local, local spending and, uh, development. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide just kind of talks a little bit about some of the due diligence that we do to ensure that, uh, there's not going to be any issues from a hydrology perspective and environmental perspective. We want to be careful, um, as we are clearing this land and chipping up some of the vegetation, which has been placed back. That there's not going to be any kind of drainage problems, uh, on this land, so we have to do this pretty extensively from our internal requirements, but also from any of the parties that we work with, whether that's financing or. Uh, energy contracts, often referred to as power purchase agreements. Next slide, please. Just a picture of what a solar farm looks like, I'm sure some of you may have heard of them, sometimes you can go by them and you don't know you're even doing so, especially if there's a tree line around the property. This is a slide where we are talking about what we are proposing for this project. Last summer, we went to county to work through the reinvestment zone and also abatements similar to what we're asking for from you. And what we are proposing are terms that are identical to what the county approved, which is a five-year abatement. So a pretty short term, starting at ninety percent of the taxes abated, stepping down to fifty percent in year five. And then the project would be operational for twenty-five to thirty-five years after that. Uh, the terms and the agreement will be discussed and worked out between yourselves and the attorney, so we'll have plenty of time to iron out the details and answering questions between now and a possible vote in January. Um, the school has also voted on an abatement for this, and that was approved at the end of last year. We are, um. Planning on continuing to work with, uh, our local contractors and get other outside EPC contractors to ensure to drive down these costs. And the reason I mention is just because we are trying to get this project where it is financially viable in our eyes to build, and, you know, that's why we hadn't approached the college before, but. Given where, uh, the tight margins are on this project, we wanted to, uh, try to get that project where we need to be and, uh, do what we can. So that is it for the, uh, the terms, I will have a copy of draft that will be sent over, we were just waiting on our tax consultant to get that ready. Um, and then this project value, which I'm sure you're interested to hear, would be about two hundred and seven million, is what we're estimating that the appraisal district would value this project at, which is where it would hit the tax rolls into one.
Right now, all this land has got egg exemption, I, I think, and, uh, can you just tell the board? In comparison of what we're getting now, do you have a figure of what we'd be getting in year one with a ninety percent abatement?
Yes, sir, I think the next slide, we'll, we'll walk through that, that will do a good job of explaining this, so currently, the annual taxes we are paying across all taxing entities is a hundred and thirty-three thousand. This land has been egg exempt for a long period of time and would continue to be if, uh, a project was not built. However, if we convert that land to industrial by building a solar project, you can expect, expect in excess of thirty-one million dollars in estimated taxes over the twenty-five years. With about one point four million coming to the college, and around, let's call it half of that or so in the first ten years, and then the, the remainder over the last fifteen. So you would, uh, substantially change the evaluation of this land, um, quite a bit, and then that also includes rollback taxes for a period of time, uh, that we would have to work on, uh, recapture on. One, one note to make, if, uh, I know some of y'all are probably familiar with school abatements, um, but the debt side of that school abatement is not something we can abate. So on a local level, the ISD, if they were to pass a bond or make any improvements, um, that would be taxed at the full value. So a lot of schools, as you'll see, will propose a bond, or, you know, they get billed if these large infrastructure projects come on, and they're able to offset a lot of that debt, largely by having a, a project like this to the community. This is just the last slide, uh, I've done several projects in areas, uh, Coastal Bend College, um, some colleges out west. And one of the things that we like to do, and that I've always pushed our company to do, is bring some of the subject matter experts, whether it's engineers, construction, developers, um, some of the trades. Come and speak to the local schools on the K through twelve level, but also some of the colleges in the area, just to talk about different career paths. Luminate does a lot of this with TFCC, um, in Waco, and then other schools out west, but, um, that is something that we would want to push to do. And try to come and talk to some of the students you have here about other career options that might be in the renewable space, since it is, uh, growing quite a bit, and there's a lot of capital being injected to it. Um, it's a big initiative, we have to build a lot of these projects, it does provide high-paying, great jobs for, for students that come out of, uh, trade schools especially, uh, that's kind of an underserved area that we need a lot of. Happy to, we're on the answering questions, um, and if anyone has any more detailed questions that they'd like to take, uh, outside of this, I'm happy to answer those by email, phone call, whatever is convenient for you.
Or any other questions?
You still, please, how many, we have pretty permanent jobs? You expect.
We're looking.
You mentioned a large number of questions.
Yes, sir, during the operations, you're looking at two full-time jobs. And then you would have additional jobs to come through that are kind of specialty, uh, contractors come through maybe for a few months here and there, vegetation management, things like that, uh, but. Really, you're looking at two full-time employees that pay a hundred and ten percent of the average manufacturing wage, that's what we are obligated to do per the three thirteen, uh, school district abatement, that's one of the guidelines that's in there. Any other, any other questions I can help with, or can? I will work on getting this agreement over to you and then answer questions in the meantime, uh, working with you all on the shopkins. Uh, again, the agreement is going to look identical to what the county has already executed, uh, just plugging in, uh, TBCC for county, and then we'll also work through your question.
One, one more.
Yes, sir.
Looking at county, which I think was originally county six, seven, four, five. And I'm abated. Once you indicate, which, yeah, we just want to do one, two, three, four, and two, one, one, two, and eleven through fifteen. Three, six, seven, I live in college, and showing a million four one, one through ten, seven, eighty-two, four, eleven through twenty-five. It sets forty-three tax on the same fraction. County does, I guess I'm curious. Their revenue is projected. At significantly less during its first ten years, because of forceful toll. Then, but it's projected differently college, ours is what they know as four one. And I can't, I, I can't make sense of that, uh, I, I wonder, I wonder why. Why our, our, which would be as a percentage of our, our, during year twenty-two. If we're both debating at the same level, you know, the tax rate doesn't matter, obviously, there's a difference. But I can't, uh, I, I can't understand. Why it would not be pretty much linear from one to the other. But yet, even with those two numbers, can see that there's no correlation.
Yes, sir, I, I think if I'm looking, if I'm seeing across you, you might have a version that prior to Mr. Hopkins pointing out an error that I made on my end, uh, that I corrected. Um, because I can see this one here is different on that slide than yours, so yours should be less than the county.
Well, it is less, but what I'm trying to get at is the second county, yours, one through ten represents close to fifty percent, same. Eleven through twenty-five, obviously. In the case of the college, one through ten is one point four versus seven eighty-two. suggesting a very significant drop off from the college with any of those experience. That would not be possible, and yet it should be doing the exact same thing. Again, the tax rate doesn't matter, you know, that's just where the revenue is.
Sure. Could we go back to the slide eleven? One, please? This this, so we're all kind of seeing the same thing here. Um, so we have the the county with.
You've made a revision. I'm looking at what books that are worth back.
Yes, yeah, and and that came over because Mr. Hopkins, uh, found an error on my end.
So so the answer to my lengthy question is, well, that was wrong.
That was, uh, me showing all my Excel skills that I should have paid attention to.
Yeah, as soon as you put it out, I said.
Yes, sir. Yeah, it is, um, with the abatement, you're looking at slightly less than fifty percent of the total and in the last fifteen years because you have, you know, depreciation, just like any kind of other project of this nature. So you would have, uh, roughly a little over fifty percent in the last fifteen years.
Yeah, both of them were about forty-seven percent.
But no, thank, thank you for, for pointing that out. I'm sorry, I.
That's okay. As soon as, as soon as I see that.
Yes, sir.
I get it. It does, in fact, follow the same pattern, you know? It makes sense. It had to follow.
Yes, sir. Good. That's right. Any other, any other questions, uh, that we can answer about Vistra, solar, this project? And, uh, again, we would love to come back in January after we do notices and and let yourself for a vote and, you know, hopefully we can work together on this, get this project moving where it needs to be. And it's not, you know, just an idea like it is right now, but can actually get moving and move some dirt and convert that land into a taxable revenue for you.
At this point, a decision to stop and abate, is that correct?
No, sir. We are working, one of the key components to any project renewable wise is a contract for revenue or power purchase agreement, where basically I'm trying to sell something, sell the power from the project to an entity like a big tech company. And I want to cover my debt, just like in, uh, in real estate, if somebody pays the rent, so you can pay the mortgage. Same sort of scenario here. And we are working with these companies, and there's only a select few that are large enough to come into a two hundred plus million dollar project and buy all this power. Because if I build a project without that agreement in place, I'm at the mercy of ERCOT and Market Wimps, which as we've all read about in the last few years, can be a roller coaster of a ride. And our investors and our board do not really want that. So when we're working on this power purchase agreement, we're arguing pennies, nickels, I mean, small amounts, and I'm competing with some of our competitors on their projects that might be down the road or in another area that's similar. And while we want the best price for our projects, we get the highest return. You know, the buyer that power purchase wants the lowest price that they get for their company. And so we're all buying for these spots and, uh, there's only so many that can be built before those companies kind of meet their goals. And they say, okay, we have Texas covered. Now we need to work on higher, you know, New York, those goals.
Well, so, yeah, I think your position, but I would also hope that the fact that, that you already own the property makes a really big difference, uh, overall technical as well.
Yes, sir. It certainly, certainly makes my job easier. Yes. Thank you all for your time. I really appreciate it. And, uh, always available for questions if you have any in the meantime.
Thank you. All right, next we have, um, consider and discuss contingency fund budget adjustment. Mr. Hawk.
Uh, or we got three items that I wanted to adjust on contingency. Uh, the first one is good, uh, when we had passed the budget, the state had not given us what they used to call it, which is just simply our allocation for their portion of the health insurance. When we did finally get it September the fifth, it was a hundred and forty thousand dollars higher than the budget, which I just put in the budget for the last time. So what I'm proposing on that one is to, I want to adjust that revenue budget. And I'm going to put the the offset into contingency. So that's going to be an increase of a hundred and forty thousand dollars to contingency. The the next item is, uh, graduation stays. We tried to buy last year. Uh, the vendor decided to change their price after we tried to do the deals. We had to postpone that. And we're not going to receive it until this year. And the last two items are the, as you recall, the two vehicles that we have ordered from Princeton. We have now received, uh, one of them, the Escape. We have an Explorer still coming. Uh, as I'm understanding, it it is sitting on the assembly line somewhere, waiting for someone to come back and work on. Uh, literally. So what we would ask is you would approve, uh, those basically four items, uh, uh, some coming out of, uh, contingency by a hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, going back.
Do we have any questions or discussion?
Okay, one, David. Just to help me understand. The the hundred and forty, you didn't know we're going to get it or is it? You didn't know how much? So you didn't know you were going to get a hundred and forty thousand?
Well, yeah, I mean, we would have just been guessing because they haven't given us.
You said a hundred and forty more than you expected.
Yes.
So you didn't know you were going to get.
Right.
Okay. So now we're going to pay for what we had in our budget through this windfall?
Well, no, all I, all I'm doing is for me to increase the revenue budget, this is a revenue from the state. But to have a balanced budget, I'm just saying, I'm going to put the revenue in revenue. I'm going to put the balance in contingency. So the budget balances to zero, Steve.
I I get that, but I don't, I don't, that's the thing to do. You didn't know you were going to get it, so it just drops into revenue. I'm sure there'll be a good place for it, but but the the other items, you're simply saying those were already planned and they were on target. That, but what I'm trying to follow is wouldn't they have been in the budget?
No, they were in last year. These, these, these vehicles we ordered last year.
Okay.
But we didn't, the budget was last year.
So.
That money's rolled into.
At the end of the day, you're saying because we didn't pay for them, irrelevant that capital reserve or reserved in
Correct.
Roll in excess
Right.
for the year's results. And so it's sort of six, one, half dozen of the other. If you'd gotten them and paid for them and you would have, we wouldn't even be talking about. Okay, I'm good. I'll follow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Uh, your motion to approve the, uh, contingency fund and budget adjustments. Motion made, seconded by, uh, Chris Ede. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side? Motion carried. Okay, uh, to consider and discuss personnel updates.
All right, I'm just asking the board to consider new hires and reclassification, adjustment and promotions. Thanks, last board meeting.
More, you have them in front of you there. You were sent a copy. I don't know. Any questions? Do you hear a motion to approve? Trusty Eason makes motion approved. The motion. Trusty Sloan, seconded. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, same side? Motion carries. All right, this time we'll, we will, uh, convene the executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Goal five five one dot oh seven four, the Texas Building Meeting Act for the following purposes. District Two Board Member Vacancy Personnel. Motion to do that. Motion. Justin Sloan, seconded by. All right, we'll be back shortly. We're here. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Here now. Is this okay, Lawrence? You got us.
We're good.
We're, we are back in session and we'll discuss the District Two Board Member Vacancy. Dr. Bassinger.
I'd like to make a motion that we need to appoint Benny Layfield. And it's sort of in that room, and if you're, you know, election of that seat comes up again, which I believe is twenty-six?
I think that's right.
That is right.
My second bet.
You have any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? No? Motion carries? Anything else on the personnel? Well, thank you, is. Uh, Dr. Charlie, it's your.
I'm making a motion we adjourn.
You hear a second? Second. All in favor? Thank you all. For your work.